Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, regarding the consideration to approve the agenda, I'd like to amend the agenda at the beginning here to add an item under old business, and that would be a resolution authorizing the signature of the mayor on a deed for the old police station to the Development Authority, the downtown development authority. And then they will in turn actually contract and sell this property to the Historical Society of Cherokee County. That we will add to, under old business, we will add item B under old business, 12B. And, okay, any other changes or corrections? Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. We need to add to the agenda under new business, which will be 13F. A discussion and possible action on a resolution maintaining local control of building design standards on residential dwellings.
Okay. Resolution on design of residential dwellings. And this is one that would be transmitted to our legislative delegation?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
And it's timely, that's why it requires possible action.
That's correct.
Okay. Motion to approve as amended?
Do we have a motion? Mr. Astis made the motion, or Mr. Yon seconded that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there was no, the agenda as amended is approved. Okay. We have a couple proclamations that we'd like to present tonight. The first, I don't believe there's anyone here for the proclamation regarding the 10th Annual Fields of Faith event, but I will read this proclamation and then it will be picked up, I believe. Brandon will pick this up. Okay. Whereas 1954, the fellowship of Christian athletes has been challenging coaches and athletes on the professional college, high school, junior high, and youth levels to use the powerful medium of athletics for Christian fellowship. And whereas the FCA is the largest Christian sports organization in America and focuses on serving local communities by equipping, empowering, and encouraging people to positively impact the world through the example of Christ. And whereas the four main values thought by FCA are integrity, service, teamwork, and excellence. And whereas on October the 9th, 2019, parents, students, and coaches will come together on their local high school athletic fields for an event called Fields of Faith, presenting an opportunity for students to share their testimonies with one another. Fields of Faith was started in 2002 in Oklahoma and has now grown to become a nationwide FCA ministry. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Canton do hereby designate Wednesday, October the 9th, 2019, as Fellowship of Christian Athletes Day in Canton, Georgia on the occasion of their 10th Annual Fields of Faith Event. Okay. And the next proclamation that we have is recognizing and presenting this plaque for the Retired Educators Day. And we do have a couple of educators here that will, at least maybe three or four, that will receive this, but I'd like to read it first and then we'll make the presentation down front. Whereas the governor of the state of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November the 3rd, 2019, as Retired Educators Day in Georgia. And whereas there are more than 130,000 retired educators in Georgia, 30,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. And whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. And therefore, Ijean Hobgood, Mayor of the city of Canton, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the day of November the 3rd, 2019, as Retired Educators Day, and I call upon the citizens of Canton, Georgia, to observe that day in an appropriate manner honoring retired educators. I would come up real good down here. Somebody make, you gonna make a photo of that?
Yeah, we've got one. Yeah, Angela's on maternity. Angela was on maternity.
That's the two.
Last week. Two weeks ago.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, former educator.
Oh, yeah. Been awhile.
And her former teacher as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I would just mention, for those of you that are in the room that don't know this, since this used to be a school, we do have a classroom up here that we've preserved with the help of retired educators that set up as Ms. Boston's classroom. And if you're ever in City Hall, we encourage you to go look at it. It's really an asset to be able to see what school life would have been like many decades ago, and it's just a highlight of this building. And we appreciate all the help that retired educators put into getting that project done. Thank you. Okay. Employee recognitions, interim police chiefs, Mayor Field?
We are doing our employee of the quarter award, and this has happened to us a couple of times. We have an embarrassment of riches that it's hard for us sometimes to come up with. With one, we have so many employees that are deserving of the award, so this is, we have two employees of the quarter. Our first one is Ms. Gabriella Gonzalez. She's administrative assistant for our Uniform Patrol Division. That's our largest division, so she has to keep up with all those officers and all their paperwork, and our captain. She also is in charge of our part-time jobs, so she has to deal as a liaison with the citizens and the officers in scheduling all the part-time jobs that are occurring. And I think she would probably tell you the citizen component's pretty easy. It's dealing with the officers and making sure we get them all where they're supposed to be and that all the pay gets done. And she does that very well. She also assists us in our social media, and she assists us in our outreach programs and our outreach programs to our Hispanic community. She's, for those of y'all that are old enough to remember the movie and the television show Mash, they had a Corporal Radar O'Reilly on there, and she won't get this, but I often refer to her as Radar because I can go into her office and give her a project, and by the time I turn around and get to the door, I hear the printer going and she's got it printed off and handing it to me. So she does a really great job, and we're gonna recognize her today. She also has her husband here. Officer Addison Bass is our officer or employee of the quarter. He's been with the department for two years. He is assigned to our busiest shift, which is our split shift. That's a shift that actually splits two shifts, and it runs during our busiest times of the day, generally between 2:00 in the afternoon and 2:00 in the morning. So he gets to handle a lot of different dispatches. I spoke to him the other night in the parking lot, and he was telling me how much he enjoyed that, how he loved the action, he loves to handle calls. I hear him on the radio jumping calls all the time. He's a very proactive officer, he does a great job for us. He does a great job for us on our community outreach. And he doesn't know this, but usually on employee of the quarter, I put it out for a vote for the supervisors, and he doesn't know this, but almost every time, he's come in second. So this time, I didn't put it out for a vote, because I figured always bridesmaid, well today is your day. But it says a lot about his consistency, because it's never always the same number one person, but it's always number some, number two person. So it just says consistently, he comes to work and he's recognized by all the supervisors for doing that. So for that, I'm gonna recognize him with employee of the quarter.
Okay. Okay.
Get ready, I got two pages. There's that much going on. Okay, so Tuesday, we had a group of 40 with us from the Georgia Academy for Economic Development. They enjoyed a mini tour of our downtown area and then a wonderful lunch at Queenie's. And we've gotten great feedback from them that they really have enjoyed. They enjoy their time in Canton, so we're excited for that. I enjoyed, personally, I enjoyed my first homecoming parade downtown yesterday. That was a lot of fun. I do have one takeaway from the parade, and that would be that I admire how the school and the community love our teachers out loud. And so it was very obvious, and I love the candy too, so that was good. If you get a moment and you haven't already walked around downtown, go out and enjoy all the wonderful scarecrow placed by the Service League and our pink bows for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Special thanks to all the ones that made the bows and our public works guys for getting those up this afternoon in high temperatures, so they were great. They're all rock stars. Fleetwood Mac Tribute Band Rumors will be our headline entertainment tomorrow evening as we enjoy our final installment of First Friday. We'll have 20 food vendors, food and beverage vendors, along with activities for the kids, so make sure you bring your chair and your blanket and come out and enjoy the evening with what I know will be several thousand of your closest friends. The following morning, we'll be back with the farmer's market, and that will be pumpkin day. We are starting to kind of see a curve in our attendance, so we have 43 vendors, which is still a great number, that will be participating this week. And then October 12th will be our last market. We do have a treat that day. We've got Green Witch Southern that will be playing at the market that day, so come out and make sure you join us for that. A lot of things are happening at the theater, so I'm gonna really sing their praises right now. Main Street sponsored a fall break Disney movie marathon last week, and it was really good, well attended. I popped in several days and saw a lot of smiling faces, so we made a lot of kids and their parents happy. This Saturday evening will be our makeup date night movie sponsored by LGE Credit Union. Pretty Woman will be playing at 8:00. Tickets are $1. Box office will open at 7:00. On Friday night, October 11th, Hocus Pocus will be playing at the theater, and the show times are at 8:30 and 10:30, and tickets are $1. Also, the Cherokee Theater Company's Still Magnolias will open October 18th, and will run through the 20th and the following weekend, the 25th and the 27th. So check out the theater's Facebook page for times and ticket prices. Family Fun Day will be in Brown Park on October 19th from 10 until 2:00. Barbecue Brews and Booze will be downtown on October 26th from noon until 8:00. And we want you to save the date for Saturday, November 9th. That's gonna be a big day for us downtown. The Chili Cook-Off will begin at noon and conclude at 3:00. We have a new event that we're adding because so many people enjoy the art and wine walk in the spring, so we're adding a beer and wine walk from noon until 5:00. Veterans Day Parade will be at 1:30. And just so we don't want people to leave Canton for the weekend, at the Cherokee Art Center Glow. The Glow Band will be here that weekend also on Friday night and Saturday night at 7:00. So you can have dinner after the Chili Cook-Off and the Beer and Wine Walk and then go enjoy some music. So got a lot going on this month, so just come out and enjoy it.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Kathy Johns, Park Village Alleyway Paving.
I know you've all, I think, gotten handouts already. Do you still want me to read it into? Sorry. Do you want me to read the whole memo, or do y'all just wanna ask questions?
Just put it in your own words. Summarize it if you like, and we've got it copied up.
Okay. Well, to summarize, our neighborhood is supposed, is going to be paved, it's already, for 2020 to be paved. There are two alleys that are not yet supposed to be paved. This goes way back to, it really would be easier if I could just read this. Would you mind terribly? Let me see, I'll try to do the bullet points. The development was started many years ago as a live-work-play development, Park Village. Kind of the city had input and involvement with it. There's a nature center that was built there, and it was to have a trolley stop, and it's a very large building and large parking lot now that we are now responsible for. The original builder went bankrupt, and long story short, he told everyone, potential purchasers, that the alleys would be paved. Then at the 11th hour, he said, no, sorry, we're not paving them. The city's responsible. So I turned to the city, and Billy informed me that the builder had been paying add-on fees to the city for all the newer homes, and that was to help with the paving. But still, apparently, it did not cover the alleys despite the fact that all of the alley owners were told and continue to be told that the alleys will be paved. So it all goes down to, you know, we wanted to turn to the bond that had been put in place as is typically put in place on all projects. Unfortunately, I understand that was right when the city was taking over with the county, and unfortunately, the bond fell through the cracks and there was not one put in place for us, for Piedmont, I mean Park Village, Piedmont, which leaves us in the predicament we have today, which alley's not being paved. It's causing a little division in the neighborhood between the people who live on the alleys and don't, because of course, the ones that don't live on it don't wanna have to pay out of their pocket. Let's see, the alleys are used by the city for garbage pickup, which that will of course have an impact on them in the future. They're really not that large, the alleys, and since the neighborhood is being paved already, we're hopeful that y'all will agree to go ahead and do them. I don't think it would be that much more of a cost to the city as opposed to if we, the homeowners, had to do it. It would be a severe hardship for us. We just took over, the homeowners just took over last year from the original builder, and we've had huge costs. We had to redo our swimming pool, we had to put on a new roof and paint the clubhouse, and again, half of which is, used to be a nature center, which was part of the whole park system. So we now are responsible having to upkeep that, which is going to be a huge expense for us, and the parking lot. Again, a large parking lot was built for this nature center and parks, there's a trail to that we're gonna have to keep up. It's my understanding there have been other neighborhoods in similar situations, not necessarily with paving, but other issues, that y'all have kindly agreed to step in and help them out, so I'm hopeful that you will do the same for us. And last but not least, as stated previously, it really comes down to the fact that there was no bond posted, which we all kind of feel that makes the city pretty much obligated to help us out, I hope, because again, if that hadn't happened, this wouldn't be an issue right now, so.
Kathy, let me ask a question. Did the, maybe it should go to Ken, I'm not sure, did the subdivision show those as private streets?
Yes.
But the whole subdivision?
No, just the alleyway.
Just the alleyway? So the alleyways are private streets?
Yes.
Okay.
But they're used, I mean, the homes that are on the alleys, that's their entrance, their driveways go to the alleys. The original concept of the whole Park Village was, you know, the walk village, and so those original houses are right on the road, they don't have driveways. You have to go down the alleys to get to their rear entrance driveways.
Yeah, I think part of our problem would be, you know, putting public equipment and dollars on private property. However, that would have to get back to be public, you know, I'm not sure, but I'm not sure we can actually put, you know, tax dollars on private property, you know, or equipment even, so, but, I don't know, anybody else have any questions?
Well, like I said, city trucks are going down them all the time already, as long as I've lived there, and garbage trucks, I mean, I don't know, just having the label private on them, I don't know, I mean, what can we do to change that and make it public? I mean, they are public streets, so.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
I wanted to ask, I remember that at one time when this came up, that we were able to work with the community and ask that the property owners pay a very nominal amount on their water bill or on some bill that went out that would ultimately pay for what they needed. And it would be, it wouldn't be paid by the city, but the city would build them, build each property owner if they agreed to do that. Billy, do you know what I'm talking about?
We talked about that.
That was streetlights in Iris Park. There's a specific ordinance to streetlights. If it were the wish of council to have the alleys paved and have them basically financed back to the property owners, it could be done through a special tax district. What we've agreed to do is that when we put out to bid the paving of the public roadways in their neighborhood, we've agreed to list an option of those alleys just to get an estimate of what the cost might be for a couple of reasons. One, one would think if we've got a company out there doing work, it would, it would be cheaper to have them done at the same time because all the equipment's mobilized, everybody's in the same area, and you're paying based on volume. The question then would be, you know, are we gonna do it and then charge back to the neighborhood, or does the estimate come back and we provide it to the neighborhood and it's more palatable than they think it might be? We won't know until we get the bid back as to what the actual cost is.
Could we, could we, when we do get the bid back and see how much the alleyways are actually gonna cost, are there two alleyways, and they're very short, I've been over there, I've seen them? If we could get the bid back and put that on a council agenda for some more discussion?
Sure.
I don't wanna just leave it. I think we ought to look at, after we get the bid back, that we ought to look at, at how much it is and what the options might be.
Ms. McGrew?
Hi. I was wondering, when the houses were new and the alleys were new, what condition were they left in? Was there a top coating or were they paved at all?
Does anybody know what that's, I think it's just top paving, it's, they're not, no, yeah, they're not, they're really rough, they're really, really bad condition.
So now they're in bad condition?
Oh, they were bad all along.
How old is that area? How old are those alleys?
Those are some of the original homes, which, yeah, '06, I think, was the original houses. And the builder has always, you know, because Billy, they've contacted them and they said, oh, we'll patch them, you know, they never do, they just get worse and worse, and, yeah.
I agree with Ms. Wilson, we need to get that estimate back and talk about what we can do to help you.
I would appreciate it. And again, I ask that you consider the extra expense that we're all gonna have keeping up that nature center, which was meant for the city, which we have no use for. I mean, it's huge, high ceilings, we have to heat and cool that, the extra roof and paint and parking lot, I mean, it really has been an extra expense to us, so.
Mr. Astis?
Yeah, I don't know who to direct the question to, but what is the making, transferring from private to public? What's that process look like and risks and evaluation?
So the last that I'm aware that we did was down in the Prominence Point area, and... that's correct. Norton Lake, and we had a neighborhood in Prominence where we required them to bring the streets up to city standards prior to making them public streets. The issue I think we're gonna have on these particular alleyways is how narrow they are compared to what standard is for a public street. Unless, unless they were made...
They're supposed to be just one-way.
Unless they were made strictly as one-way streets, you know.
I think, I think what we'd have to do is we'd have to have staff go out and evaluate the determination of what it would require to take them from private to public.
Mr. Dyer?
I think you were asking about process. It's, they dedicate and we accept.
Okay. Traditionally, it's bring it up to standard and then...
They're describing what, they were going to the merits of it, but...
Yep. Okay. Thank you. No, I agree too, we should definitely get the estimate and then put it on for discussion.
Can I ask a question of some?
Sure.
But, Mr. Dyer, do you have any comment on what offhand you might think the city's obligation is due to the fact that they failed to get a bond put in place that would have covered this?
The bond probably wouldn't have covered, because they were private, if we had gotten a bond, because we've had other neighborhoods with private streets where there were no bonds, so I don't think the failure to get a bond does anything.
But aren't builders always required to, when they're built out?
For the public streets, the bond would not have covered the private streets because the city would not have been responsible for maintenance of them.
Okay. I guess even if it was in the contract, I guess I'd have to go back and look at...
It's a weird thing to have both, a public and private.
Okay.
So it's a weird thing.
Okay, yeah. Alrighty. Thank you very much.
It kinda makes you wonder why did, why were they private to begin with? If part of them were public, why did they have part up? Maybe they ran out of money?
No, it was on the original...
Well, I think they ended up running out of money, didn't they?
Pardon me?
Didn't the developer go under or something on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, on the original Park Village plan, it was unfortunately...
Yeah, let's get those. Billy, when would you anticipate, Billy, when would you anticipate having something back regarding that?
I think, I think Scott Hooper said that our goal was to get the proposals back around the first or second week of November, so we were planning to bring those to council for adoption in December, understanding that paving would likely be a spring project.
Yeah. Probably wouldn't get paving now anyway, you know, probably, as the cooler weather actually ever gets here.
I think we will complete the Lamig paving this fall, but I think our Sploes paving is scheduled to be a spring project.
Okay, so this should be coming back in November, or?
We should be getting the numbers back in November. Staff will then make a recommendation for the contract in December. But knowing that we'll get the numbers back in November, and traditionally, we've always, we've always sent the council below bidder, unless there's been a specific issue with the firm. We should have a ballpark of what the cost of those alleys are in November, and we'll try to put together some options during the same amount of time. We can have the engineering staff go out, look at the roadways, and see what it might take if we were to move them from private to public.
So Kathy, I guess my point was to try to tell you when you might wanna come back for a discussion before the council, and you may just wanna watch, it might be the first meeting or the second meeting in November, right?
And so what...
As far as the discussion goes.
What I will do is when we put an item on the agenda for discussion, I'll make sure that we email...
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, recommendation of the planning commission to study traffic flow patterns around Cannon Park, Richard... flow patterns around Canton Park. Richard Kemp.
Thank you, Mayor, and distinguished members of the council. One second. Sorry about that, just wanted to make quick conference there. When I came to the Canton 17 years ago, you could come downtown Canton at five o'clock in the evening, seven days a week, and there was nothing here. Absolutely nothing was going on. It was a ghost town. And I want to commend you, Mayor Hobgood, and the, the people that you work with, our city council and our city staff, and everyone else has brought Canton up to where it is today. A vibrant, fun place to come, and hopefully, we're gonna continue this after your departure, you coward, but anyway. Unfortunately, along with all this new traffic and businesses and stuff we downtown, we come up with, our favorite subject in the Planning Commission is traffic. We all love traffic. If you look, and I think each one of you got a map that we talked about, I believe the history is, when they put the post office in the Jones Building, they changed the direction of those two streets, the one between the Jones Building and the gazebo, and the other cut through between the gazebo and, which is now the Cherokee Water Authority Building, I believe. They changed those streets to the direction that they currently are. If you would consider that to be a traffic circle, per se, it would be the only traffic circle in the United States that runs counterc, or clockwise, versus every other one in the United States run counterclockwise. We would be famous for that. But my whole objective of this thing is to try to improve our traffic flow downtown. Considering that we have moved from the church city hall to the high school city hall, the police department is down in the old city hall, we're contemplating building a very large parking deck either over here or over here, I'm not sure if the decision was made yet, which means there's gonna be a lot more traffic coming to this side of town. For example, if you were driving west on East Main Street, boy, that sounds confusing, doesn't it? West on East Main Street, and you wanted to come to City Hall, you have to drive all the way down to the triangle, I don't know what the proper name for that is, and, and make a U-turn and come back here, and then come down Academy to over here, or come down to Church Street if you want to go down to the police department. If you change the direction of the cut through between the county office building, the county water authority and the gazebo, just change the direction, not put dual directions in there, you could make a left turn there, make a left turn on Main Street and an immediate right, that will put you down towards City Hall, the parking garage, and the police department. If you're leaving, for example, the parking deck, and you want to go up to Main Street, you would be, you could make either a right-hand turn and continue east, or if you wanted to go west on North Street, you could cut almost straight across in front of the Jones Building and make a left-hand turn there. I've driven at, it was, which I'm sure most of all of you have, many, many times. I think from a safety standpoint, it makes much more sense to put them back the way they were, because the site distances are much improved if we put those seats back to the directions that they were. I've had several occasions where I wanted to go out and make a left turn on North Street, making that cut through by the water department, and if there's a van or a large vehicle parked there in front of the gazebo, it is hard to see to your right back on North Street. The same token, well, I almost had an accident coming out of the post office one day to make that left turn on Main Street, because the bushes were so tall, but it looks like they've been cut back. So from a standpoint of sight, from a standpoint, and it makes more sense to change the directions of these two streets, alleys, or parking lots, or whatever they are, just makes a lot of sense to me, and would make the traffic flow in downtown Canton much easier for everybody. So that's what we're proposing, to look at it, consider it, and hopefully, we can get that done and make downtown a more inviting place for everybody, and we hope that Canton continues to have its growth and viability and all the other stuff we've got going. It's gonna be an exciting town one of these days.
You know, it used to be that way, as you, I think you mentioned, it used to be the way you're proposing there.
My understanding, yes.
And it was changed, that was, I think, I think it was before my time, it was changed.
Well, my understanding was, because when they put the post office in the Jones Building, the traffic backed up real bad on Main Street. People trying to turn in there. Well, the post office is not there anymore.
You know, I think we probably ought to look at that and, and really evaluate how many, I know if, if you go in from, if you go in in front of the old Jones Building from East Main there, and, and would turn left on North Street, you're probably gonna lose some parking spaces down to the right there, because it's gonna be hard to see there as well, you know. It's gonna be pretty hard.
But it's a lot easier to see out of that, because that street drops off to the right, and you can see back down East Main Street there. Whereas if you come down the other street, like I said, if there's anybody parked there by the gazebo.
And I think we talked about, if you come the other direction out next to the water authority there, you might, I can't remember, but you might lose a parking space or two there along the curve.
Entirely possible. Yeah, entirely possible. But considering the difference it would make in the traffic flow, and the fact that we're building a new parking deck, would certainly offset that.
We can, we can look at that, can't we?
Sure.
And evaluate it and everything, and maybe come back next work session and talk about it. Mr. Yon?
I was just gonna mention, I think, and I can't remember if it was a parking study or a traffic study that we had done downtown, I think that was one of their recommendations also.
Yes, I had the traffic study here, it was one of the recommendations.
Well, I think some of that had to do with the fact that there was a discussion about moving to two-way streets instead of one-way street. You know, I think, I think it's probably a broader discussion about what you do with all traffic patterns downtown to specific roadways.
Mr. Patton, you have to come in.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. I think the city manager was referencing the LCI, the Canton Forward Master Plan, in which there were discussions in regards to the possibility of moving away from the pair of one-way streets, and the possibility of making North Street and Main Street both two-way streets. The city council has looked at this issue in the past. Stan Tech Corporation did a, a little bit of a, a study in regards to reversing the flow of these two streets, if you will, on either side of Canton Park. I believe it was 2014. I had provided a copy to Mr. Kemp of the report that Stan Tech had done on that at that point in time, in which they talked about the loss of parking spaces, and there were kind of three options relative to changing and restriping. And one of the issues, as you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor, was that, you know, if you were gonna, basically, come up North Street from the south to make a left turn, you would have to lose some spaces, there was a potential site distance. But I can certainly get council members a copy of Stan Tech's report that was done back then, and of course, staff can revisit it and update information for council.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Astis?
I was just gonna say, I think it's, it's good to, I was starting to, when I first saw this on the agenda, that, what the study might be, because it should be, personally, it's, it's been like a thorny thing, you know, you start driving down the road and you miss that, and you gotta go all the way to Snovis to turn back. So, so I get the, kind of that, it, it just seems inconvenient, so it seems very logical. But I think, you know, the things to consider would be number of spaces lost, and, and of course, cost to restripe and whatnot. But, you know, it sounds like there's a lot of stuff that's already been done, so hopefully, it wouldn't be, you know, months of, of evaluation and, and, and studying to, to, to figure out if this is a, is something that we could move forward with pretty quickly.
Moving forward is not free.
Exactly.
That's true.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Ms. McGrew?
If I would, could ask Mr. Peppers to take a look at the parking lot there. If it's gonna have to be restriped, we need to evaluate if it needs paving, and let us know about the cost of that, and the cost of the repaving and the striping. Thank you.
And I had a thought too. If you re-aimed the parking spots, you'd have to redo the curbing and the street scape in that area too. So, if we could get some kind of rough idea of what that might cost.
If this was an easy fixer, it would have been done a long time ago.
Well, this is true. This is true.
You know, I, when I first, when Mr. Patton first mentioned this to me, I kind of joked that, you know, it would have been easier if they had just moved the gazebo to one side or the other and just kept Church Street going all the way through, and then you wouldn't have to worry about turning the road. Right? So, you know, maybe there's other options to look at as well.
It used to be that way too. It used to be a street straight through.
Yes.
Yep, that's true.
Straight through.
Used to be a fountain there as well.
It used to be a fountain right in the middle of the park, but it was a street that went straight through there.
As part of the Planning Commission, I, I tasked the other members, I said, you know, we're not just here to listen to applications for new houses or subdivisions or whatever. We are city planners and, per se, we need to look at other things too, and this was one of the things that we looked at, which we think needs some consideration.
Okay. Any males? Thank you, Richard.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay, the next item, request for road name change from Mill Industrial Way to Reformation Parkway. Who's, who's handling that one?
Here's Mr. Hodge.
You're handling that. Okay.
Yes. Yeah, Reformation's been open now for seven, eight months. I think there was fear before that it was gonna be party central. I think we all witnessed that they're a great operator. You know, you've got, you know, between Spencer Nix and Nick Stian, both were ordained pastors, and they create a culture that is contagious. And, you know, I think a testimony to kind of what they've done is, everybody thought it was gonna be a bunch of young kids down there, you know, drinking beer, but what I've witnessed down there is, you know, at least sixty, seventy percent of people there are my age, fifty-five and over. So it kind of is a testament to what a great job they do in terms of adapting to the demographics of Canton. And right now, we've got a, you know, an old road that is called Industrial Way, and we like to change the name to Reformation Parkway.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Is the name Mill Industrial Parkway or just Industrial Parkway? We have it two ways in our, it says in Mill Industrial Parkway on the agenda, but then in Mr. Penn's letter, it just says Industrial Parkway.
I think it's Mill Industrial, is what we have at least today.
Official records that I looked at, in all reference, that is Mill Industrial Way.
So Mill?
Yes.
And I would just mention, probably the reason this has come before council is that there's actually an address on that street. Georgia Power has a substation there that's been addressed, and it lists Mill Industrial Way as the location. And so, you know, the, Mr. Hodge, they've been able to get Georgia Power to agree to the name change and what have you. When it first came up, I asked Mr. Patton about, you know, whether the city has to rename private streets or what have you, and we went back and, we found an example back in 2006 where what's now Anderson Avenue, which is behind, or in front of Riverview Apartments, behind Crystal and all that, it used to be called Creekmore Drive. And so, that's the, that was kind of the example we found in the past, so that's why you have it before you as an ordinance. And then ultimately, it'll be turned over to Cherokee County and E911 for their addressing system.
So, what, where do we go from here? Do we put it on the agenda for a vote?
It'll be on the, it'll be on the 17th.
That's right.
So it'll be on the agenda for 17th for a vote?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Penn, off the top of your head, can you describe to me the improvements that will be made to Reformation Parkway?
You know, it's, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we don't really plan curb and gutter for that, for that road. You know, everything is gonna get repaved. But, you know, as you, as you kind of come through the auto zone, it's mostly gonna be parking through there. You know, as you, as you come down that Parkway, Parkway, we're gonna have kind of a staging area for the outfitter. And then there's also an, an old Cherokee Indian fishing weir that's there that will actually create, do some placemaking around that for fishing and that sort of thing. You know, where the, the, the existing concrete plant, that's where our apartment space is.
Are you going to widen it?
I, I don't think so. It's pretty, it's a pretty wide, you know, it's already a pretty wide Parkway.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks.
Just a statement, not, just, I appreciate your comments that we, that with Reformation going in, that we haven't seen the debauchery and everything else. I think it's a, another testament to when, you know, they think there's still this urge for government to over-govern and limit people and their morals and whatnot. So, another great testament, so thank you.
I understand that the fear of the unknown is, you know, always a fear, but, you know, I think it's proven that they're, they're a fantastic organization, and they do a fantastic job doing what they do.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now we will have a public hearing and discussion on the Planning Commission's recommendation for Cas, Case ZCA 1906-001 to amend pod configuration for River Green. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. Very briefly, this is a zoning condition amendment. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this. The applicant is proposing to move some of the residential units from the original master plan pod N into pods FGH and O. This will be all single-family detached residential units. The total number of units proposed for these pods FGN and O was 152 units. And we can discuss other items at the end of the public hearing, as well as answer questions at the next council meeting.
Okay. We will open this. Is, is there anyone here to speak in, in favor of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, Mayor and Council. I'm David Durham, the president of JDP Collection, along here with the owner, Mr. John Whelan, talking about the next phase of River Green to develop. I think we gave everyone a package of information, so what I'd like to do is just give you a quick overview, and then we'll just kind of run through it page by page, and then happy to answer any questions. The, the, the next phase has evolved over a series of meetings with the neighborhood that's adjacent to the development, Oglethorpe Park. We've met at their clubhouse on several occasions. We also met with the HOA on several occasions. Mr. Richard Palmer is the president of the HOA, and he's here tonight to speak in support of our, our proposed plan. We adjusted a number of homes. Our original proposal had a tax product in this section, and we deleted that. It's all gonna be detached single-family. We relocated the mill kiosk from the entrance over traffic concerns, and, and we defined a common boundary between us and the HOA surrounding the lake. So, so we've evolved, going through several iterations of the plan. If you look on page one of the handout, at the top of the page, there's a shaded section, that is Pod N that we're referred to. It, it was 15 acres. It was approved for 61 homes. That section was sold, and it was placed in a conservation easement. So those 61 homes that were approved as part of the master plan would not be built into that section. We're asking to relocate 31 of those homes into our new section. Still on page one, the red star shows you the area that we're talking about is the next phase. It's immediately adjacent to the lake, next to the existing amenity. The master plan that was approved in '04 has a density of 1,497. Currently, including our proposed plan, we would be at 1,276. So it's still under the approved density of 221 homes. The biggest driving factor- Uh, the biggest driving factor in our request, or what started this whole process, is the steep topo. We're currently under development for a section behind the daycare center, and we are moving a lot of dirt based on the topo that's in that section, so we're trying to take advantage of it, create a plan that's a little more efficient. Uh, if you look on page three of the package, the approved plan that's currently in place is shown in red. It was large lots and pretty well encompassed the entire development. And then we layered in our current plan in yellow, so you can see that we're eliminating five of the cul-de-sacs. We're pulling our plan up to try to run the highlights of the ridges of the area to take advantage of the topo. What that allows us to do is to create additional open space, and also, from an end user, most of the homes will have a really deep private rear view once they're constructing. Uh, talking about the open space, if you flip to page four, the, the light green is the original planned open space, and then the dark green areas are the additional non-disturbed areas that we're picking up because we're, uh, condensing our plan. The, the site is seventy-three acres. The overall non-disturbed portion of the new plan will increase to thirty-four point one. So that's almost forty-seven percent of our total acreage is going into a non-disturbed condition by this new plan. Uh, page five shows the plan. It includes three different lot widths. It's, it's the small scale, they're a little hard to see, but it gives us a chance to go to a broad segment of the market. Uh, we are also showing small pocket parks or open spaces. They're shown in dark green scattered through the neighborhood. And then adjacent to the lake is a amenity site that we plan to build, is shown in pink. We've put a, a separate amenity site, a neighborhood gathering area, and a clubhouse into this space. Uh, the strategy is that having an amenity into this section will minimize the additional use of the existing neighborhood facility. Uh, our strategy for overall is to build owners on the main homes and to have it active adult for fifty-five plus. What that also does for us or for the neighborhood, it's, it's a different market segment, it's a different buyer, and so that'll limit competition for anyone trying to resell their home or any future resale of a family home, because this is a different buyer. And lastly, adding these homes will increase membership into the HOA. That'll increase the HOA's revenue stream. Uh, we've also agreed, the HOA in the next budget hoped to build a walking trail around the lake, and we own a portion of that property. So we've agreed to fund and build the portion of the trail that will be on our property when the HOA funds and builds their portion, so it will save them some money. Uh, I, I think that's a quick overview, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's, let's go ahead, and you may want to, in, in case there were any rebuttal or anything, save some time for that, but is there anyone else that wants to speak in support of it? Okay. Uh, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this?
Sir?
Uh, wait, he, did he, you'll need to fill out one. Oh, you got one? Okay, if you don't mind, give it to the clerk, please. And if you would, just state your name when you come up.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Michael Knype. I'm a resident of River Green, in particular back in the Ogglethorpe Park neighborhood adjacent to the entrance to the proposed Lake Parcel. Um, I'm neither here to speak for or against the plan. I will commend the developer for listening to the concerns raised by the, the homeowners in Ogglethorpe Park and responding to them for the most part. I think the plan they have now is much improved over what was originally presented. But in, in looking at some current issues, I think we have, in particular on road safety in the back part of the community, uh, any further development, which I know has always been part of the master plan, is just going to exacerbate the problems. There is a transfer of density now that Pod N has been placed into a easement, conservation easement. So that extra homes that they wanted to put in there, not all of them, but some of them will go into the remaining pods, such that there's a twenty-six percent increase over that which was originally approved in the master plan. Um, I'm not having a big issue with that. I'm, any further development back there is just going to, I think, like I said, cause more concern on River Green Avenue. There also is a, a part of the area adjacent to Ogglethorpe Park. It's on Mimosa Drive. It's a, currently a gated road that leads down to a pump station. That, that's stubbed in for development in the future as well, and so whatever density changes might be on that are, again, a contributor. So if you're, I know there's a couple of members here that are River Green residents, and they know the roads that I'm going to refer to. If you turn into, for those of you who aren't, when you turn in off, into River Green off of Knox Bridge Highway, you're on the main thoroughfare, River Green Avenue, which is a median divided road until you get to Woodbury. And then after that, it becomes a double yellow line road all the way through River Bend Way, traffic circle, on up past the Heritage Club, all the way to the tail end at Ogglethorpe Park, which will now be where Lake Parcel goes in as well. So some of the concerns that we have is that last stretch of road beyond the traffic circle, and particularly when you get to Clubhouse Drive and, and back, you're, you have, you have driveways that dump out onto that road. Prior to that, you don't have any driveways common to that road. So what's happening is there are, as, as in most neighborhoods, there's going to be service vehicles, landscape vehicles, construction vehicles, numerous types of vehicles that park on the road, on River Green Avenue in that section. That particular section beyond the traffic circle is hilly and has some curves to it, which ends up having some limited sight distance issues. And when you're trying to go around these vehicles, oftentimes they have trailers. You've got a pretty long run that you have to actually go into the opposing lane and take the time to come around that, that vehicle, at risk of somebody coming across the crest of the hill at twenty-five-plus miles per hour. And a, a number of us have had some near misses trying to navigate that. Uh, so when you're, when you're having to deal with that, uh, there, there's been some discussion that maybe no parking in a particular stretch of that road would be, excuse me, would be solving the problem. And, and that's probably the, the best alternative I see from my limited experience. There's been discussion of a stop sign put at Clubhouse Court. Unfortunately, the stop signs are prior to the crest of the hill, so you have to actually leave the stop sign, crest the hill, and now you've got to face, uh, possible traffic coming head-on to you, and that's not a good situation to, to have. I presented this concern at the planning commission meeting on twenty-four September, I think it was. Uh, and we did reach out to Bethany Watson here, and I've had discussions with her, and I've, I've sent her an email stating I'm ready to help however necessary. But I would ask that the city council, as I asked the planning commission, uh, to, to implement a study to see how best to improve the safety on that stretch of the road. I don't want anybody to have property damage or injury or a more serious death-type injury. So I, I think if I could just ask that somebody knowledgeable with the traffic studies can get involved and, and see what the solution is. Uh, like I said, in my simple mind, I think probably a stretch of no parking would be the best thing, because it's just not a good sight distance issue. Now, all that being said, there's also an issue where driveways dump out on River Bend Way, uh, north of the traffic circle. I don't think it's quite the same issue, it's not quite as hilly and curvy, but just to be fair, that, that probably shouldn't be dismissed either. I'm most focused because I drive it every day on the area going back to Ogglethorpe Park. So I appreciate you listening to my concerns. I'd appreciate if you could try to, uh, think about what might be best to do. Um, I know Mr. Estes lives back in that particular area, so he's got firsthand knowledge of traveling that daily. Uh, Mr. Yon, of course, is, is in the neighborhood, too, so he's familiar with it. So, um, any questions?
No, this is just a public hearing. We don't, we don't go back and forth on this one.
Okay.
But thank you, we appreciate your input very much.
All right, thank you.
And I, and I certainly agree that, you know, we need to look at the safety of that, that, that area for sure. Okay, thank you. Anyone else here in opposition? If not, we'll close the public hearing portion of this and see if the council has any thoughts for discussion purposes. Ms. McGrath?
Would those sight distances and no parking issues be taken care of through our staff? Would our engineering staff look at that?
They would certainly need to look at it, yeah.
Well, so traditionally, if council wants no parking in certain areas, they adopt that as the form of an ordinance. Um, we, we routinely get phone calls from neighborhoods that want us to enforce their covenants, which restrict parking on the streets, but we can't enforce covenants, we can't enforce an ordinance. So if it's the desire that there be no parking within a certain stretch, then we would need to have an ordinance for that. We'd need to sign that area. We'd need to mark the curbing within that area as a no parking area.
But I think probably need to look at that. Ms. Wilson?
Is it legal to park on that thoroughfare?
It's legal to park on a street unless the council has an ordinance stating that there's no parking on the street.
Right, I understand that, but I didn't realize that you could park on the street if it's a thoroughfare.
Well, so, you know, in, for instance, in my neighborhood in Great Sky.
Right.
Um, people don't traditionally park on Great Sky Parkway, but in all of the roads through the pods, they do park on the street. So, you know, I think it really just depends on the neighborhood and what's going on.
Okay, that was my question. I didn't know if it was le, I didn't know it was legal.
Mr. Estes?
I was just going to say, if, if it was the, could be the wish of the council to, to work with Bethany or Mr. Patton, to just, with Mr. Knype to provide, uh, direct feedback, um, since I might have a little more knowledge about that than others on the council, but to, to help with, uh, just coming up with a good solution there.
Yeah, I agree. Anyone else?
And I was just going to also say, I, I, you know, just a comment to, to the Whelan team, I think it, I really appreciate the, the continued willingness to, to work with the community. Um, you know, they, I really think that they've set a really good best practice in, in setting the bar high in terms of what, what other developers don't do, especially with, with communities like River Green. Um, so we're very fortunate to, to have them, so thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is another public hearing and discussion on the planning commission's recommendation for case MP 1907-001 to amend conditions at Summer Walk. And in, I believe in conjunction with that, uh, we'll be holding this public hearing and discussion for planning commission on the recommendation for case MP 1907-001 to amend conditions at Summer Walk. Is that, that's the same one that we, but we have, we have the conditional use permit public hearing as well at the same time, right?
Yes, sir. Both of these applications, the master plan amendment, as well as the conditional use permit approval, is for the same property up at Summer Walk. Uh, again, the planning commission has conducted a public hearing in regards to both of these cases. The applicant is requesting that Summer Walk master plan be amended to delete the approved commercial portion of the Summer Walk development, allow that to be developed for residential purposes. There's some existing acreage, and I think it's about six acres, that was already designated for the approval for ninety-two townhomes. The commercial portion, uh, was a approval for a hundred and twenty, one hundred and forty-six thousand square feet of retail office with twenty-three residential units to be located above that residential. They want to do away with that. They are requesting approval for four single-family detached, uh, building lots up on the back entrance to what is, uh, the single-family portion of Summer Walk. Then the rest of the commercial acreage would be added, and they're requesting one hundred thirty-four townhomes be approved. That's the reason for the conditional use permit approval process.
Okay. All right, we will open the public hearing, and is there someone here who's going to present that, uh, home in support of the application?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. A little point of observation or correction. I downloaded your report that you received that y'all may have got, and it contains a, a letter of intent. The one I saw downloaded was not the one that was amended and included with this application, and there's just a couple of slight differences in the two. So we're moving forward with that amended letter of intent. I, it may be that your file includes the amended one, but I'm not sure, but I wanted to bring that to your attention during this presentation. Uh, as Mr. Patton indicated in his comments, this is Summer Walk, and I wanted to give you a, just a, a look, I know you haven't seen it, but I just highlighted these four lots here that we want to change from commercial to four residential homes on, on lots that will be added to Summer Walk. These houses will be compatible and similar to what's in Summer Walk. They'll be part of the HOA of Summer Walk, and we think that changing that portion of the property from commercial to residential will be appreciated or, I think, deemed more favorable by those folks in Summer Walk, not having that huge commercial right there going into their subdivision. So we think that that is a, a serious plus. In addition, uh, we believe the current residential units in Summer Walk and the future residents that might live in Summer Walk will find this amendment that we're proposing to you more favorable than the existing plan by adding to our residential units. You know, we're, we, we got twenty-six, and so we only add just over a dozen actual units because we already had twenty-six on top of the commercial. So it's not a dramatic change, but we think it's significant, and we think it'll be favorable out there. We are, as indicated by Mr. Patton, changing or dropping the hundred and forty-six square foot commercial and replacing it with, and the related twenty-six residential units. We think this is more suitable than having the commercial out there as things have played out in this particular area of the city and county. The townhome amendment would be going from ninety-six to one hundred and thirty-four. As I've indicated to you, we, we think that, and when you do the math, there's a total of sixteen units, but four of them are residential homes, so single-family homes. These homes in the townhouses will be, they'll be sold as homes, you know, they're not rented or anything like that. As designated in our letter of intent, it's actually on page three, uh, this group has reached out to Cherokee County and met with the engineer, Mr. Morton, the director, Stallings, and the fire chief, Chad Arp. All of this was done to make sure that this proposal is consistent with what the county would require, and the Bluff Parkway extension with herd road, our proposal with our streets will be compatible with that proposed changes they're going to be, the county's going to be making in the near future. We anticipated, and we addressed the issue of upgrading or upsizing the waterline. We got the, the minimum requirement of two entrance compliance with the International Fire Crew. Actually, there's four entrances off a walk of road into the townhomes. Did, in fact, uh, meet and make peace with the, Mr. Hamilton, with the Cherokee County School Board, and they'll meet their obligations and commitment there about school impact. We, uh, there is another item during our presentation to the meeting with the planning commission. One of the neighbors wanted to know if it would be screening between this property and his property there on Faycon Road, and I, I talked with the group that I'm working for, and whether it's a veget- and whether it's a vegetated screening or privacy fence, whichever one is more suitable, they're willing to do that. He asked about that, and in response to that, that was the only comment that, I'm sorry about that, comment that I picked up on, and they agreed that they would do that too. So when you take the project as a whole, I call it tweaking more than a major change, but we think that this change that we're proposing is consistent with what's happening out there in that area of the community. We think it would be actually less traffic, particularly as you enter into Summer Walk, but not having commercial, but having residential. So all in all, I think it's a pretty decent plan offered to you to consider, Mr. Mayor and council members, and we hope that you'll see appropriate to approve this amendment. So, thank you for these few minutes.
Thank you. What's that? Oh, Mike Bray. She just wanted your name.
She didn't state my name. I've been up here so much that I figured.
That means your client doesn't have to pay you, right?
This has only been going on 50 years, y'all. Thank you very much, Mike Bray on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you.
I would, I would mention to council that he mentioned an amended, there are two letters in this section of the packet. It's the second letter that he was referencing.
Okay.
I have to make sure that there were actually, on the computer, I believe that there are three letters of intent. I might have clicked on one of the wrong ones.
No.
You will have the latest prior to the next council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. I just saw it downloaded. I don't always believe this downloading business. I get in my truck, and it tells me I gotta update it before I can do certain things on it. I mean, we're living with these things, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this? Okay, is there anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing portion of this, and if the council has questions or discussion, we'll entertain that. Any questions? Hey, Mike, you did a pretty good job on this one, apparently. No questions? Maybe not, maybe not. Ms. McGrue?
Easy questions, price point for the products. I didn't hear him.
The price point will be in the low 200,000s and up, based upon square footage of units and upgrades.
And will the exterior designs blend in with what's currently there?
Yes, because these are townhomes, they will have to go before the oversight committee.
Okay, and private or gated or public streets?
Walker Road is a part of its county road, so it would be a public street, and part of that will come to city maintenance.
And the townhomes are fee simple or rental?
Fee simple.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, moving along. Item eight, consideration to approve the minutes you have in your agenda package. The council meeting draft minutes from September the 19th. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
Second.
Mr. Allen made the motion to approve, Mr. Estes seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion? You also have in your agenda package for informational purposes only, the financials for August. Chief Financial Officer Nathan Ingram is here to answer any questions if you, if you have any, any questions or comments.
I had two things. I had noticed under stormwater fund, the stormwater management expense is higher than budget, is that a one-time thing, or is that?
Sorry, repeat your question, please.
Under, on the stormwater fund, the operating, under operating expenses, the stormwater management line item is variance is like $42,000.
And your question is why, why is the variance?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we no longer have employment in the stormwater fund, that's all been moved out. I believe that's gonna be the quick answer, but I'll verify that, and I'll get, respond back to council.
I would mention also that, I think it was last year on stormwater fund, we ended up contracting with an engineering service to assist with some of the new MS4 reporting requirements that we received from EPD, and that may be where some of those additional overages are coming from, on that area.
And I have another one on SPOSS seven on streets, it's like a 400 percent. Is that just something moved, or is that?
I will get the detail on that. Anything else?
No, that's a, stuff like that, it sticks out.
There you go. Anyone else have a question, a comment? Okay. Our 10-minute public input period, we have someone signed here, but I think they meant to, that, they made the presentation with the zoning public hearing, so. No one else there, okay. Under old business, discussion of the resolution for a moratorium until April 15th, 2020, to bar the acceptance of annexation, conditional use permit, master plan, master plan amendment, rezoning or zoning condition amendment applications. Ms. Wilson and Ms. McGrue, who's gonna take that first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
In our retreat in February, we talked about the inadequacy of Highway 140, and we talked about the multitude of building permits that were being requested for Ward 1. So, Ms. Wilson and I have been talking about this for several months. We're concerned about the inadequacy of 140. It has no shoulder, and it's narrow, it's a crowded road, and it has pedestrians on it with nowhere to walk but either in the road and sometimes over in the weeds. Like I said, there's an abundance of development being requested to go into Ward 1 when we don't have adequate infrastructure in place to move them back and forth on that side of Ward 1, on the side where Town Mill is, it's a little better. Their infrastructure is good with the bluffs. Already, traffic is backed up at all times of the day on 140. We're also cautious, but not completely worried yet, Mr. Hatabian, about sewer, but we're being really cautious about it. So, we talked about putting the brakes on development for a little while, taking some time to look at the 2040 comp plan, the LCI report, the land use plan, zoning of the master plan, comparing all of these documents, and let me underline, this will be a painful endeavor. It will not be any fun at all, but it needs to be done to check the zoning of property that is raw. Does that fit in with today's Canton? The zoning was done 20 years ago, sometimes 30, sometimes 10. Does that fit in with the economic direction that we're going now? Does it fit in with our economic needs and our plan? So I would like to do a study, just ourselves, and I know I had mentioned all of the city going to moratorium. Ms. Wilson and I have discussed, and we would compromise to Ward 1. And I would like to see a committee of two council, one or two P and Zs, and a resident and staff to take a look at all of these documents and come back with a report, talk about the zoning that's in place, does this zoning really match what we're doing now, what we want, and where we can see development happening, and maybe where we can redirect some development. And I think Ms. Wilson had an addition.
I commend Ms. McGrue for her very good synopsis of our discussions. The resolution, as it is presented, we would submit that the study be done, and then the resolution be looked at again by the council, and the resolution would stay the same with the exception of the first paragraph that says Ward 1, in Ward 1. So we are only proposing Ward 1. And then down in number 1, we would say that the rezoning or conditional amendments in Ward 1. So we are asking, we don't want anybody to think that, that there's a problem going on in the city of Canton. There really isn't. We just feel like it's time to stop and look at what has been proposed 20 years ago for this area that seems to be getting a lot of activity. So we asked the council if we could study that and perhaps come back with the resolution that we have a moratorium in that area.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Estes?
So I, I appreciate the, you know, we've had a good discussion the last time, and I appreciate the Ward 1 piece. And from what I've heard as well, I think it's kind of the, the major message here is just tapping the brakes, if you will, to, to say there's a lot that was, was set in motion 20 years ago, and now it's just about, you know, working together with, with P and Z as well as the community to just understand what the needs are. I think we heard in some of the proposals tonight, the public hearings, you know, in some cases there were, there were ideas that were planted, you know, for nature centers and whatnot, and then we, in the middle of everything, had a major recession. And so, a lot of stuff has changed, a lot of course correction, and so it, it does give us an opportunity to not constantly react, but to be a little bit more strategic. And so I, I appreciate that. So, I, I think this is good. I think it, it is also good, I, we've got concern the last time, at least I personally did, that we'd be sending a message to people that we're closed for business, or we don't want development. So I think this, this clarity here really helps align that, so.
And I would add that it's only, we're only asking for a six-months moratorium, just to give us a little time to start.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think it's time that we, we take control of development, because it's going to happen. It's coming to us whether we like it or not, and it's up to us to shape the city the way we want to see it, and what we want to leave for our children and our grandchildren. Excuse me, the decisions we make today are going to be here after we're long gone. So I want to be sure that we, we decide correctly, and what's good for everyone, and just take a break. And this committee, I'd like to see work, it's gonna be hard work comparing those documents, but I think it needs to be done to see if those zonings are still what we need.
Anyone else? I tend to agree to an extent here. I think the resolution would probably need some tweaking, quite honestly, and, because what, what we have in this resolution would prohibit me if I owned a piece of property and it was zoned for our 15 multifamily apartments. I could not make an application to zone it for, you know, single-family residential 15,000 square foot lots. And I think somehow or another, that was not the intent of this, is to downzone, you know. If you downzone, y'all will be able to do that, for sure, you know. But this, this would prohibit that as it is, so, just a little bit of tweaking, I think it would need to take care of that. But anyway, anyone else?
Would you mind telling Mr. Dyer exactly what you want, so that we can?
Well, I think he probably could tell me better, but I.
You would just prohibit anything that increases density?
Yeah.
Any public hearing for blah, 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 that increases the density. But is that exactly what you meant? I thought you were trying to stop any development.
We can't really stop what's being built already. Let's say, you know, Great Sky is already in progress, River Green's in progress.
The moratorium already addresses that by only prohibiting public hearings, matters that need a public hearing. So if you say matters need a public hearing that only increase density, somebody might downzone, but it still could be a large subdivision. Whatever y'all want it to say, we'll make it say.
I think, I think the density is, well.
Well, the major reason.
Well, a number of units, I think, how about that?
One of our major reasons is traffic. That's the number one issue, is the traffic. I would, I would yield to some of the other council members, if, if we're gonna study it, maybe we should study everything.
Well, I like what Ms. McGrue said about, why don't, why don't we have a committee of two council members, two P and Z, and maybe two staff members? Is that, I'm not sure exactly what you said, but something like that.
Well, whatever staff member's available at that time to help. We may be talking about water, so we might need Mr. Hatabian and not.
Right, okay, yeah, sure.
Or we might need Ms. Anderson and not Mr. Hatabian. So whatever the conversation is going to be that we would plan for, we could ask Mr. Peppers if that staff person could join us.
Okay.
What do you think about a community member? I know, you know, just a neutral community member, because we've got three people.
Is there such a thing?
No. Well, on P and Z, we have three people in Ward 1.
Yeah.
So, you know, they might be good, two of those might be good to have on the committee.
Billy, let, let's put something together, maybe the next day or so, and, of course, of course, you and Ms. Wilson should be the, in my opinion, the two committee members for this, since y'all.
We'd like that, thank you.
Already invested so much of yourself into this already. And so, I'll, I'll try to get a couple of planning and zoning folks, maybe that, that are in that ward, and then, of course, Billy can assign, or the committee can then assign and reach out to the staff members that they need at any particular time.
What about the wording of the ordinance?
We'll have to let him do that.
Okay, Mr. Dyer.
And, you know, you might not, and you talked about wanting to do that a little later. We might not have to do that right now until further into it, anyway. But I think, I think it's, wouldn't have to, there's not gonna be much of a change, I don't think.
What we just have to be careful of, I think, is a, a moratorium for, for six months doesn't directly impact the traffic and the wastewater, right? I think the real intent here is to tap the brakes, to be more strategic rather than reactionary, or end up in situations where maybe P and Z is, is appearing to be over here, and then we always go against them. So I think it's just having open dialogue and communication on that as well. So, so I think, I just want to caution that a moratorium doesn't necessarily fix the long-term stuff, but maybe tap the brakes to, over six months, to allow for six months to study and do the hard work.
Yeah, there's already enough stuff already approved out there that will keep things hopping for the next six months, in my opinion, even in that ward.
And there's nothing to say that we can't come back in three months and say, hey, we're good, let's open it back up. We also might need to come back and say, can we extend it two months? You just don't know, but being flexible is the key here.
Okay. Anyone else?
Can we have something brought back next meeting to vote on? Or do we, we can inform the committee and start work.
Yeah, we'll have a committee in the next fairly short period of time, a very short period of time, and then I guess it'll be up to the committee when they want to bring something back to really, to another work session or, or meeting to vote on.
So are you saying that we're not gonna have a moratorium? Something formal?
Well, I understood you to say you didn't want to do, you, did you want to have the moratorium immediately? You want to look at it first?
I wanted to change it to Ward 1, but I think the reason for the moratorium is for the study, for the, for, to look at what we have and what we're planning to do, and, and not do the study and then do a moratorium. I think we, we want to bring that back at the next council meeting, is my understanding.
May I ask Mr. Patton? Do we have anything in line coming forward, any? Any applications for development?
Yes, I, I know that there's a annexation as well as a rezoning. Believe that there are two other applications that will go to the Planning Commission next month and on to City Council in November.
So we can't affect those, can we?
No, those were met the deadline before any moratorium-
Got you.
Were to be enacted by City Council.
So I see a need to call a moratorium because we're going to continue to get applications in if we don't.
So you want this on the agenda for a vote on the 17th?
Please.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
With the change for it just to be at Ward One. That's, that's what I think we want.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. The next item is the resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a deed to transfer to the DDA. Billy, you want to? Oh, I'm, did I miss you?
No, no, no. He jumped, he forgot about the amendment agenda.
He can handle it though, if he wants to.
I, I was just going to, as, as you recall, council had asked the Downtown Development Authority to sell the property to the Historical Society.
Yes.
The closing date for that is on or before October 15th. Downtown Development Authority has their meeting next Thursday. And so these two agreements are basically you turning over the deed to the property to the Downtown Development Authority for them to close with Historical Society. And for an agreement between the Downtown Development Authority and the city reserving 30 parking spaces on that property until which time a parking deck is built.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll authorize the mayor to sign.
Because of the time, timeframe involved here.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Wilson made the motion, Mr. Yawn seconded the motion. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor, 65% say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Discussion of Water and Sewer Rates Study and Possible Rate Changes. Now's your time.
I think that one was easier. Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you recall, a few months back, we had Mr. Henry Thomas with PRMG, which is now Rattella's, present the rate study. At that time, he had indicated that he recommended a few changes, just a few changes. And first and foremost, I want to reiterate that we're not recommending any changes to the residential potable water rates. And we mentioned that during the presentation as well. But you have a page there in front of you, it's, it's got a, it's on the letterhead of Kent, City of Canton, and it's, has a couple of highlighted items in yellow and green. If I can draw your eyes to that piece of paper. That indicates the two significant changes that we are proposing to implement January 1st, 2020. The green shaded areas is the, are the irrigation meter rates. Right now, the irrigation meter rate is $17.17 a base charge. We are proposing to reduce that rate to $13.29. And the consumption rate, we are proposing to raise from 6.51 to make it more in line to what the residential potable water rate is. If you look up above, it's $7.80 for everything over 10,000 gallons to 15,000 gallons and $8.47 for everything over 15,000 gallons. We're trying to make it more in line with that. As I was mentioning to Mr. Peppers earlier, right now, as it stands, for everything over 10,000 gallons, it's actually cheaper to draw irrigation water than it is potable. So we're wanting to make those more, more in line. Furthermore, having a, a reduction in the base charge will help some of the citizens, the customers during the winter months when they do not use that irrigation or bring, it'll bring it down about $4 a month. So we think that'll be a benefit to the, to the customers, end users. The items in yellow affect our commercial rates. And what this is proposing is that we make the base charge scaled as the size of the meter. For example, right now, our largest commercial customers that have four, six, eight inch meters are paying the same price as everybody else, even the residential customers. There's a, a paragraph here in the presentation from PRMG that I'd like to read just a few excerpts from that may help explain some of that. "The factors used to develop the base charges by meter-sized charges were based on the system's existing TAP fee relationship. This change is consistent with general industry practices, practices and is made to recognize the inherently higher readiness to serve cost that a larger meter has compared to a smaller meter." As I mentioned, we have to, we have to maintain our water plants and our wastewater treatment plants to accommodate those large consumption users, the large commercial accounts. So with that being said, some of these larger meters are inherently a little costlier to provide those water and sewer, sewer services to. Those are the only changes that we're proposing to be effective January 1st, 2020. Council has any questions? I'd be more than happy. And as I noted, I'll be more than happy to resend that proposal, the, the rate study presentation to any council members if y'all would like to re-review that.
Can you tell me, Dave, may I have to, how is the TAP fee calculated for meter size? And what is the reasoning behind that calculation?
That's a, that's a good question. Not sure if Mr. Hatabian can answer that because I think that predates all of us. We haven't modified, we haven't modified those rate structures in a while. The TAP fees.
Sewer TAP fees, I guess.
Water and sewer TAP.
Yeah.
I believe we did some modifications in 2014, 13, somewhere in that range, to be more in line with the Water and Sewer Authority. There were some differences, particularly on the, on the water side because they actually will install the larger meters themselves, they'll provide the, the larger meters. But we did a, we did a pretty intense study of surrounding areas and looked at different TAP fees. I want to say it was like 2013, 2014. And I know we modified some at that point. I know we added the, the fire line TAP fees, which we didn't have before, but we haven't looked at it in, in a while.
Okay. I, I guess I've kind of been under the impression that TAP fees are really what are supposed to be the capacity.
It's, it's not necessarily a reserve fee, it's more of a funds to use into the operation and maintenance of the systems.
Okay. Anyone have a question? Comment? That was easy. Okay. All right. Discussion of cashless commerce services.
Thank you. Historically, the city of Canton, we've used different vendors to receipt our credit card charges, the, the payments that we receive via credit card. We have different methods in the municipal court, community development, as well as the utility billing department. Even within the utility billing department, sometimes there's different charges for individuals that, that want to go online and pay their credit card, pay their utility bill versus those individuals that come in and swipe, swipe right there at the customer at the point of, point of sale. With those different charges, we've looked at wanting to consolidate that into one company. It's going to make it easier for us to manage, easier for us to review. And we believe it will, consolidating those will ultimately probably save the customers or, you know, money as well, certainly as well as the city. We issued a RFP in June of this year. We received three proposals from government windows, from Payment Service Network, PSN, which, which was the largest proposer, some of you recognize that name, and Value Payment Systems. I would like to comment that this service is generally a no-cost service to the city. The way that these vendors earn their revenue is through a 2% to a 4% charge on use of the credit cards. We've all experienced that when we go to the retail business. But those proposers, those three proposers, since we only had three, we did interview all three. We convened a committee that consisted of individuals from finance department, from basically all of those point-of-sale service centers, municipal court, community development, as well as communications and outreach. At the end of the interviews, it was a unanimous decision to recommend to council an award be issued to government windows. Some of the services they offered, they offered IVR, not only an IVR, a bilingual IVR so that customers could call in any time of the day, 24 hours of seven and make payments. If they needed services in other languages, we could accommodate that. Offsite mobile solutions like sometimes our First Friday events, you know, if we wanted to sell products at First Friday Event or Farmers Market or anytime offsite, we could accommodate that. As well as they streamlined our collection services and made it a little bit more user-friendly to the customers that go online, have a little bit more recognizable, that, that same color coordination, you know, with, with the City of Canton's website, make it a little bit more user-friendly. They offered additional services as well, and I mentioned a few minutes ago that it was no cost to the city. They do have some cust, some services that if we so choose, it is a cost. For example, allowing the, the individuals that call in on the IVR system, if they want to speak to somebody, a real person, they can hit number, you know, and speak to one of our customer service representatives. But we did, did focus on government windows when we're recommending a ward to government windows. They are a local company out of Woodstock. That's not the only reason we chose them. But as their name implies, they deal almost specifically with governments, counties, municipalities. And if you look at their reference sheet, they have a lot of clients, a lot of references to, for, for us to, uh, check on. There is no long-term contract. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, there's no inherent cost to the city. We can end it at any time. So i- if so, if we choose. So we're, we're recommending the award to government windows. If y'all have any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Anyone have any questions on that? Sound like a plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion of street acceptance for the streets in Laurel Canyon Pod 4 Phase 1. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a little bit different of a situation than I normally come to you guys with street acceptance. Laurel Canyon Pod 4 is actually one of the sections in Laurel Canyon that is assessed an add-on fee for the topping. And so the street is actually not topped yet. But recently, we've had a homeowner in that section come to the city asking to accept the streets so that the city can come and top it with the add-on fees. All the houses have been built in the pod. So everything but the topping is in.
So, so you're saying it's accepted, well, it's city street anyway, looks to me like. I mean, we already got it, I think.
That's right.
I mean, once we approve those plans and it shows it on there, I think, you know, it's city right away.
Right. But we need a formal acceptance in the record so that we can move forward with any prospective top coating in a, in a budget.
So would you accept it before you did the top coating or after you did the top coating? Or does it matter?
Well, I think we have to accept it before we put the top coat on it. We should accept it for maintenance before we physically maintain.
Whose do you think it is now?
Once you put the top coat on it, you've accepted it.
I, I tend to think we accepted it when we approved the, the plan showing it public road and we accepted that plan on the, that they submitted site plan, a development plan. I, I think it's ours then. And, and the fact that we didn't get the proper bond is the problem. Had we got a bond on that, it, it would have been done. But, you know, that's, that seemed like that's been coming up at least once every few months for the last 12 years, I know. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that.
This street's very similar to the same situation we have in Iris Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I will point out that I have talked to Scott Hooper and he's going to decide which streets that need to be topped so that we can accept them all because Park Village is not accepted by the city yet either.
Same story. Anything else?
Feels like a good candidate for consent agenda.
Yeah, it does. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion of request proposals for Canton Housing Needs Assessment and Market Study. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember staff has worked with the city manager in regards to the preparation of this request for proposals for housing study, our Housing Needs Assessment Market Study to understand at City Council. At retreats previously, had discussed the need to conduct a housing study, if you will. If you'll recall, the City Council approved and we had a consultant come in approximately four years ago and we did a rental analysis relative to apartments. And that five-year window of their projections relative to adoption rates will end next year. This proposal is quite extensive. Staff spent a lot of time looking at other proposals from across the country, talking with various members of council, other staffs within the area. This study will address projected increases in older adults, large age housing stock, workforce housing, need for new housing development, mixed-use areas, transportation infrastructure, housing choices for sensitive populations such as veterans, the elderly, accessibility to persons with disabilities, other special housing needs, homelessness, need for homebuyer education, older mobile homes, manufactured homes, no longer meeting codes, need for additional housing types, housing choices, starter homes for young families, need for transitional housing, as well as coordination of housing with transportation infrastructure. This proposal breaks all of this down into five major task areas. Task one would be housing initiatives, looking at what's in place now. And baseline for housing initiatives will come out of that. Task two will look at demographic, geographic, economic data. Task three will look at housing stock trends and projections. Task four is the market analysis. It will study residential real estate trends of all types of housing, including analysis of past residential sales, length of time on the market, other real estate metrics. Include information, new residential units, types of permits issued. Also will look at market rates and discuss rental units again. This report have a summary of trends, historical data, future projections. Task five is development of implementation strategies and recommendations for council's consideration as we move forward into the future with development. That's a quick overview of this. It is quite an extensive list of items to be looked at. You have any concerns about anything contained within it? Let us know. We'll take it out, hopefully come back at the next council meeting and you all will request that we move towards posting and publishing this and getting bids in to bring back to you probably in December or January.
Okay. Ms. McGrue?
Thank you. Mr. Patton, on 1.1 intent, number 11, would you define transitional housing for me, please?
That sort of depends upon who you talk to. Transitional housing in certain circles is associated- Transitional housing in certain circles is associated with folks that, if you will, have been incarcerated or have problems associated with drugs or alcohol. Then there's another type of transitional housing in which individuals transition from, say, a single-family home to needing a little more care. So it depends upon which group you're talking about as it relates to transitional housing.
Okay. When would we budget for this? Would this be in 1920 budget or 2021?
It probably could be 2020, but most likely 2021. And city manager might be able to more adequately address budget for this item.
So, you know, CFO and I've had some discussions about it. We really don't know what it's going to come back with a price tag on. But ultimately, you know, understanding that housing is going to impact just about everything we do as a city, it could be that we fund it from a mixture of sources, you know. We may look at a portion of it as being something that comes from the enterprise fund based on what we need to prepare for. We may have a portion of it that comes from perhaps impact fee, rental car. You know, we don't really know until we get, until we get the proposals back. But we do have funds that we could pull from to make it happen this year.
Okay.
It would likely require a budget amendment, though.
Will one of the tasks, the considerations be for residential that's already approved but not in the ground yet? Will that be taken into consideration?
Yes, that will be a part of the overall analysis within this study.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Estes?
Do you already have a shortlist of potential consultants that if approved, you would immediately send this RFP to?
I'm aware of a couple of firms in the metro Atlanta area. The firm that did our rental analysis is one I would send this out to. There's another firm in metro Atlanta that has done a good bit on housing studies that I'm aware of that I would send it to. But we would also post it on the city's website, probably post it at GLGA in their section for a request for proposals. I can also post it through Georgia Planning Association. There's no fee there. I can look at the fee charges and post it on American Planning Association. And you probably get some responses from some national consulting firms.
And does, would it be appropriate to also maybe leverage some of this consulting work for some of the stuff we were talking about related to the moratorium? You know, to have someone independent that could also listen and learn about our struggles and challenges, maybe provide feedback? Or is that kind of too much scope creep there?
Well, I think the moratorium is going to be addressed by the city before we get to the point with the consultants.
Not, I shouldn't have said the moratorium. The, the committee that would be as a result of the moratorium, the, the committee that Ms. McGrew asked to be set up. Would it make sense to have someone like this to?
Well, there again, this RFP, we have to advertise it, get the bid. City council wouldn't be looking at consultant and an award until December or January.
Okay.
Which probably won't fit with the timeframe with the study committee relative to the.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. I remember how helpful the study that y'all did on the apartments was to us as we looked at, at new proposals coming in. This is really something that I've been looking for, and I think everybody on council has been looking for. So I commend you for bringing it to us. I think every one of us is really tired of hearing, like I heard today, my mother wants to move to Canton, but there's no housing available for her in her price range. This will allow developers who are looking at the city to see what we need here and bring what we need to us. So I am excited about it. I can't wait for us to get started and look forward to, to your working with it.
What she said.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Okay. Discussion of golf carts on city streets. Mr. Yon?
Yes. I had brought, just mentioned this a meeting or two ago, just to get people thinking. It's something I think we've needed to address for quite a long time, and it's just kind of been put on the back burner. And I'm seeing more postings on social media of people worried about like unlicensed drivers operating, carts operating on the streets when we don't have any control in place. So I just think it's something we need to look at. I pulled, you know, sample ordinances from various cities, and they have some differences, they have some, some similarities. So I'm thinking it's something that we probably just need to put a committee together, maybe some council members, the appropriate staff, someone from the police department to go through and come up with an ordinance that fits what we want in our city. And we need to get input from the public. Do we want it in just the neighborhoods? Do we want it in everywhere? Do we, what class of vehicle are we limiting to? What, you know, just all those things we need to work out, who will handle inspections and licensing and all that. So I just think it's something we need to start working on and the committee to come up with an ordinance that fits Canton. I think it would be to step in the right direction.
We might be a little late because Halloween's coming up, and that's when I see a lot of golf carts out on the street.
It is. Because, I mean, like the county has an ordinance, and they're, we're so mixed in with, especially in my ward.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have a uniform or something that kind of at least complements their ordinance so that we're all on the same page. Mostly it's for the, to make sure that the carts are on our streets, are, have this proper equipment, have the proper safety features that the people that own them are aware of the licensing requirements for the operators, that, I mean, just, we're all on the same page. So I just think it's something we need to start looking at.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Okay, the last item, F, discussion of possible action on a resolution maintaining local control of building design standards on residential dwellings.
If you'll recall, last year, there was some legislation that was discussed down at which basically would put restrictions on local governments having any types of regulations on certain parts of residential development. Some of the things specified in that were that cities would not be able to determine some of the cladding material that's used on residential development. Cities would not get into paint colors. Cities would not get into things related to the energy code. Cities would not get into window placement, door placement, garage doors, and things like that. And, you know, ultimately, we as a city have a unified development code, and that development code gives us the ability to look at each development and see how it impacts our community. And so many of the cities around us are moving forward with resolutions to send to their delegation, basically asking that they not consider entering into new legislation this year, which would take away that local control. It might not be an issue perhaps in the neighborhood where there's covenants, but it could be issues in areas where we don't have covenants in place. And so if you can imagine that you've just made a significant investment in a home only to find out that your neighboring property has decided that they would like to do a, a nice African mud-style home with a thatched roof and perhaps no windows or doors visible from the street, it, it might not be great for our property values. And so this, this resolution basically just expresses to state that, you know, local control really should stay at the local level.
Okay, so this is something we, it's very timely to act on, I think, tonight. So do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Ms. McGrew made the motion. Ms. Wilson seconded the motion. Any other discussion? This will be transmitted to our full delegation.
That's correct. We'll also send a copy of it to the Georgia Municipal Association. And to, we'll send it to our field staff office representative for the governor's office.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, I'll have a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, second or five, are saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion? Okay. City manager's report.
I only have one item tonight. We had, we have discussed in the past a property that the city has along West Marietta Street. It's .08 acres that we currently do not have a use for, and we had a discussion about surplusing that. The city did get an appraisal on that property. In speaking with the city attorney and with staff, one of the things that we have to evaluate if we're going to do a bid process, for instance, is what structure could be built on that particular site. And it's, it's very narrow what might be built there because if you build something on there, there's really no room for parking. You'd have to have parking on the street, and, and so that makes it a little bit difficult. In speaking with the city attorney, if we consider the lot not to be buildable, we can negotiate directly with the adjacent property owner for the sale of that property as long as that property owner agrees to pay at least the appraised value that we've received back in our appraisal. So I'm asking for your direction on what you would like to do on the disposition of that property.
Comments, thoughts?
So we can bring it back next meeting for a action item to offer, to sell it to the adjoining property owner for $28,000? If that's what you want to do.
And that was the appraised.
That was the appraised value.
Yeah. That'll work.
I don't think that piece of property would be of any use to anybody else on earth, except him.
And that's what, that's the, that's what makes it an exception to having to publicly bid it. In this case, there, there's only one bidding property. The statute says you have to offer to all of them, but there's only one. So that's why we got the appraisal, so we.
We'd know what price.
We know what price to put on it.
Request. Okay. So you don't need anything for us to do that, do you?
We'll just put it on the, just.
It'd be on the agenda.
Unless you obviously said no, but that's what we'll do.
Right. Okay.
I don't have any other items.
Okay. You have something? Go ahead.
I have a council introduce item.
Okay.
You ready?
I'm ready. Go ahead.
Based on the feedback I believe most of us are hearing in the community, I would like to propose that council approve issuing a check for $20,000 to the Sequoia Regional Library from rental car fees with the condition that the city is made aware of how these funds benefit the citizens of Canton. I ask that you consider this for the next meeting agenda.
Okay.
For a motion vote.
Anyone else? Comment? But, okay, we'll have that on the agenda, I guess, for the next, next meeting.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the $20,000 what we normally give the library every year?
We went back and pulled historical information. We've given them, last year it was $20,000. We've had some years it's been as high as $35,000, some years it's been 25, some years it's been 20. It's just kind of.
And when would we cut this check were we to approve it? When do you recommend that we cut the check if we approve it?
As soon as it's approved next meeting. Right.
Gotcha.
And I think also, this $20,000 or our support of the library has been in addition to what they receive from the county in the past.
It is.
So, so we're not doing anything that we haven't done before.
I understand.
But you, you want that worded in such a way that in return for the $20,000, they have to let us know what supplemental service they're providing?
Part of my motion will be that the condition is that the city is made aware of how the funds that we give, the funds that they receive benefit the citizens of Canton.
So what we will do is we will prepare a budget amendment with that wording in it to be placed on the next agenda for your consideration.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Anything else? Anyone else? How do you think? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yon made the motion. Ms. Wilson seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.